Finally here at City Hall. Sorry it took me so long y'all, I was editing that video, I can... I'm blurry, let's just put it that way, I've been working on it all day. I think I started on it yesterday, but I really, that was just the planning. Check out the new video. It's the one I just posted. There's a bunch of short clips of videos that I thought would be of interest. I don't know if I can get in here. Can I get in here? Have to find out. The City Hall is still deliberating the police contract and we're here to, uh, you know, see if we can get in.
Go ahead and put our metal, uh, wallets.
You want to do this one first?
Yes. Okay.
And this is like the poles for it. The tripod.
Okay, and then zip that as well?
This is the camera.
Okay, thank you.
And batteries are over here and stuff.
Okay.
Battery battery or two.
Okay, and then anything else?
I don't think there's anything in that pocket today. These are batteries, big batteries. Way to hold together for you.
Okay, and then, uh-huh, uh, anything metal on you?
Take my belt off.
Yes, if it's metal. Oh man, you can put your bags up there, they don't have to, uh, get checked manually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was here earlier.
You want this one here?
I went way back here earlier, someone stole my purse.
Okay.
There's about a million cops in there to talk to about it.
Yeah, both now.
And we start by saying that we support police organization that also by helping out police from the pre-organization period and which means that we need to be able to recognize the officers as council members, as permanent components of this community support and advocacy. Officers deserve an efficient administration that lets them focus on their job.
Yes ma'am.
Community organizations need to be realistic. In this effect, it appears to me that many communities, all of us, are in the AKA. There appears to be a clear understanding that we, the number of calls we make strongly to the availability of community resources and rest problems that the police in any case are not equipped or trained for the office immediately. The police contract undermines the interest of police officers and of community people because it transfers excessive authority from citizens, from the civic leadership and from the municipal administration to the AKA. Cities with aggressive national capabilities and include these outcomes. Thank you very much.
I didn't hear my end of the year. I know. And City Hall decision day will require two or three. First of all, I am sure not that I can read the case. Here's the people getting on time earlier today. If the city has to say anything about the hot people on that order, or, or, people being paid. Human beings are not expendable under AID circumstances, no matter how their presence affects you or how their presence inconvenience you or affect your business. Human beings are not expendable because you personally believe you have a right to use land. When I walked past a man passing on the sidewalk last night on my way to the Paramount Theater, I felt sad that I wondered about him, I worried about him. How can that hotel worker earlier today equal so much disgust about the human beings he sees on the street every day? Expecting sympathy from you and others that cheat, a wealthy privileged white woman has to look at these people who are actually the ones that are experiencing lack of safety every day. It is the council duty to make sure we can find all the departments and services needed, keep all Austinite healthy, safe, and living life with dignity and opportunities, not more police to force them out of spite, arrest them, or otherwise make their situations worse. You all know very well that this police contract will negatively affect Austin's citizens, and that there is no guarantee of a program will be maintained at their current levels, not to mention getting much needed increases of their own. If you agree to this, the gentleman that concerns for the safety of his employees working downtown, he wants the area to be safer for him and his workers, but how does this police contract do that? As Chris said, what if step two, and he wants step three or four? This contract won't actually keep people safer because it will need fund programs that are already underhanded that desperately need to alleviate poverty and homelessness. Feeling safe because of having more police is a perception, not a reality, and a lot of people feel very threatened by police, and with good reason. My friend Cole Weaver, who has police before testifying today to return to work in medical care, doesn't feel safe at the idea of more police. As he testified previously, he feels terrified because he is a black man with autism, which makes them very vulnerable to racist and ableist policing practices, not to mention complaints leveraged by some of the people who are in favor of this contract today. My mistake about an individual person themselves and what the background. The City of Austin is a trailblazer, not only in its high level.
Thank you, your time was expired. Your name is previously called, so feel free to testify, but state your name for the right.
Hello council, my name is Ben Sutcliffe. I apologize for the manner that I rushed into the chambers. I'm a proud 1624 member, do not miss my union meetings. We just adjourned up the street, rushed down here. I want to talk about specifically on this item 48, about the transfer of these funds. You know, the, the amount is eye popping for most average Austinite, sixteen point five eight three million dollars, moving just for this fiscal year, just for the budget that we've already approved. And from the slides that the budget presented in the work session this week on Tuesday, you know, just look at slide eight, there is a listing of twenty twenty five one-time contract funding. Well, I'm listing things like, uh, three point two million for rapid greenhouse, two point two for home security prevention services, one and a half million for attended mobile crisis outreach coverage, and a long list, it goes on and on. Uh, you know, point one million, so, not even a million dollars, but a tenth of that, for flood insurance premiums, so many things that our community critically needs. And these are one-time contracts, not ongoing obligations. I don't envy you in the state, you know, in the place that the state has placed us, aimed into a corner with caps and with, you know, unfunded demands that are loaded upon our local government, these are difficult decisions. But I really ask you, please look at crises that our community is facing and realize that this large amount of transfer to the police department, which is permanent, so that legal ratchet thing, is not what your constituents are asking for. We haven't had a chance to have the conversations about where our priorities actually lie. These proceedings, while very well attended, in my experience, is not, is not going to attack or attack each and one of you. The processes that do that are our town hall meetings, the ones where we meet in the library at the rec center, get to hear from each other, and where you get a chance to, to inform us, and sometimes we get nuances that we didn't know about. The art of budget, my great phrase, is art and not a science. What we're talking about, if we continue on to slide two from that same presentation, is a whole bunch of costs that are going to be locked in, ongoing, and we're facing an arpegue cliff. You know, millions of dollars coming through federal government, they're not coming in there. And, you know, sixteen million that we're talking about on this item, that could be the fifteen point four million needed for the homeless strategy office. It could include, you know, just the three million that Austin Public Health needs, or even not. I again ask you to vote no, or at least post vote.
Somebody can sweep more people.
Trish Nyswander? Nyswander, sorry, I forgot her.
She's signing up remotely and she's here.
Why don't you step to the podium? Be easier for you.
Hi, thank you everyone. Thanks so much everyone, I was able to call in earlier on my lunch break. My name is Trish Nyswander, I am a city vice president with AFME sixteen twenty four, and a proud city employee for the last seven years, and I'm here today to ask you to consider the ramifications of this giant budget increase that can never decrease for the police, and the effect that that would have on your civilian workforce and the city services. I, I believe that maybe we need a little more time looking at what the implications of this might be. It, it, it seems a little rushed. The one budget projection that was put out earlier this week was basically examining one scenario, and I believe that there are any number of things that could happen around sales tax revenues and potential federal funding, what happens if we have another pandemic. There are a lot of potential issues that need to be taken into consideration because once we commit to this level of funding for the police, it can never change, it can never go down. And I am not saying police do not need a raise, I am saying that we need to make sure that we have a holistic perspective on the budget and what the ramifications will be going forward. I do not know that a tax rate election is going to be the most practical solution for the citizens of Austin. The workers are overtaxed, you know, the workers of the city, the working class of the city are very stretched, stretched thin through inflation, rising costs of living, all the expenses of daily, daily life, the odds that they would want to continually vote to increase their taxes, to increase, to entax, to increase taxing themselves, same kind of luck to me at this point. I'm out there with the workers, I talk to them regularly, everybody is very stressed about the cost of living today. So I really would like y'all to take a step back and maybe just think about the larger ramifications of taking on a budget this large that can never, never be reduced, and what is that going to mean for the rest of your city workforce and the rest of your city services? Thank you very much.
Trish, and then Christopher Pitts?
I'm just going to play this video. This is my response to the recent questions. Are you volume? Sorry to take a little focus. My eyes are actually a little blurred, I can't see you guys that well because I've been editing this video all day to make sure that I have a response, it just, uh, it takes a long time for me to edit a bunch of videos together. Current videos to show your state's look, thank you.
There's someone else to speak? Why don't we have the other person speak while they work on that?
Mr. Pitts?
Your name is Councilor, uh, you all heard me speak earlier, my name is Chris Pitts, I'm, uh, I'm on the White House Park screens and a member of the 1624. Y'all heard me speak earlier about how, um, the contracts that the, to, to other city departments that would be required to implement, implement this contract would affect the Parks Department and Park Screens. But I was, uh, I also wanted to address that comment that was made by the Austin, the president of the Austin Police Association earlier today, where he said that he, where he said that the Austin Police Association has no problem with, uh, with police capability. If that is the case, then why has the Austin Police Association stood in the way every time voters tried to implement, um, any sort of police capability? Why did the Austin Police Association create a fake ballot initiative in order to confuse the voters and, um, disrupt the Austin Police Order Act, which was, um, which was passed by the majority, the majority of Austin? Why does the, why does the Austin Police Association still continue to try to, um, try to keep the G-file confidential, which the voters of Austin have voted, that they want to declassify G-file? City manager of Broadnecks, um, when we were discussing the city, the city budget this year, you encouraged us to exercise discipline. I would ask that the council do the same when talking about a police contract, and I would ask the council to vote no, because, um, this police contract would, would cost a hundred eighteen million dollars over the next five years. This is money that would be coming out of other departments and would be increasing our taxes, and I believe that this is a very irresponsible use of our, of our state funds. So for this reason, I ask the council to vote no on the police contract.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have a remote speaker, should I go ahead and take them? It sounds, it looks like it sounded taken.
Okay, please do.
Marina Roberts?
In item distance four, it is well documented fact that for design enormous funding research, that the overwhelming minority of crime victims by people whose lives are being ravaged by poverty, a lack of good housing, a lack of access to healthcare, a lack of employment or being employed by officers who steal their wages, which is the single most prevalent form of theft and with shorts to all other types of theft combined, and about which police do nothing. When I think about future, I want my son to have, I think about parks, libraries, parents at school, they can see a doctor when they're sick, and his parents can see accountability when they suffer violations of their labor rights, which is a real crisis in a city. It's bizarre for town folks to entertain testimony from people who lack this basic understanding, and to move through the world and set the solutions to a relentless and blocking people in cages, which again, research shows is not even the most cost effective way to address this issue. I expect the resident city leaders to know better and to do better, and to base on research significance decisions. I want to echo research that's been shared showing that this contract won't address a D and staffing shortages. You already get fifteen thousand dollar sign on it, if you join a CD, and they're already the highest paid cop in the country, but you couldn't get me to become a cop owner, you know, much to pain me, because I don't want to play the role in society that cops play. I don't want to solve problems with cages, I don't want to do things that work, maybe that's of a heart of A D D trouble. It's a hell of a gamble for council to vote yes on this contract, you know, when you couldn't get such contract decrees if you put it on the ballot, and knowing that with this sale, you call all the crimes, you will be unable to change course on our budget. I will support anyone who supports this contract in my vote, and I've heard from a lot of folks today who feel the same. You've also heard from a lot of folks who support the contract who likely wouldn't vote on a progressive candidate if you were running against a hard boiled egg. So choose your best fellows and know that approving the contract needs to capitalize your ability to solve every problem, and handing the future election challenger a very destructive way to attack you in the next race. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Here's for the exception of Mr. Reyes, I'm not sure.
We, we figured out the problem, or we gonna be able to?
Still working on it, Mr. Reyes, can you?
Phrase, would you like it? Good.
Ready to play that, how do we have?
Just identify yourself.
I'm a member of the press, I've been doing the police accountability for twelve years.
Yes, and now, like.
Medicine?
They're okay, just normally giggling, we didn't hear you last week.
Scary beach out, right? You were asleep with your dog?
The idea of bragging, get out of my face, like I was asleep, bragging, like. Friday day, say, I want to get slammed on the ground, even if it really makes me feel like I can't be taking it.
Will you do anything the city council tells you to do, your masters will tell you to do? Will you do anything for money? What would you do?
If they go to jail, they just go over state, or they go to jail straight, if you're not successful, or if you're, you know, the side rock.
I'm in the category. Hey!
My god, sir, oh my god, oh my god.
Now, I'm, I'm scared, with a whistle. What's the decibel level at that, at that distance? Don't care, dude, why don't you report yourself as being a bad cop?
Well, because I don't think I did anything offside, you think I did something offside, you can actually go to the police and say.
Why don't you report yourself?
I'm a father, seven, seventy, and I'll see you on my next.
You're a suck.
Oh, you're a Nazi.
Man, too much. I put a left knee, you won't feel good for you, huh? I hope him, I hope him. We'll back up, or I will. DC you then?
Yeah, we had to take down that fucking building, man. Like I said, I had this fucking wrist up there, and then I was there for a snap, just on the shoulder, I'm quick. I literally had to hang them under when we all started watching.
Hey, come on, safety.
I hold the dogs.
Who's missing a man?
Okay. Seems to be buffering a little bit. I'm definitely afraid to be a member of the press in Austin, thank you very much. Please give them a raise so that I can be less safe.
Thank you, sir. I, I can't.
All those non-communicative statements are on course, second.
Thank you, members, that, that concludes all the speakers on items forty seven and forty eight, so we will now take up items forty seven and forty eight. The way we'll do this is I'll get a motion on the table and then we'll have discussion related, uh, to the motion we have on the table. Is there a motion to, the mayor of Tim moves to approve item number forty eight?
You don't want to see the truth. That's something part of it, that's all I could do today.
We'll now open, meaning for discussion on the motion to approve item number forty seven.
I knew you looked familiar, couldn't pick a hot one.
Thank you, I wanted to ask a question.
Thought you were willing to ask them.
I like that, that video. It needs to be shown, the video needs to be, the video needs to be shown.
Okay, I think I'm going to head home too.
I'll be safe. I'll be safe.
Good, good, good. Sorry, I didn't.
So now what?
They're waiting to vote on the thing.
Are they going to vote? What time is it?
After the, I guess, after the.
John Fortune Deputy City Manager, I'm happy to, um, provide some context for, um, the question.
He didn't like the video.
You know, we have already made it very well public that we know our G-file, so we received requests for G-file material.
Doing great.
We are handling this open records request, because that's what they are. And then being processed through the police department's open records division, and as those requests become.
They're Nazis.
They're making the requests. Now, I will tell you, that because of a lot of requests for G-file material, there's a lot of volume associated with some of the material that we have to, to provide, and so in some instances, we've, we've been asked for personnel records for the entire, um, every officer that's currently employed with the department. And some of those records go back several years, twenty plus years, and many of those records are, uh, in warehouses and they are archived, and so some of the requests that we receive will obviously take a little more time to comply with than some of the more recent ones, or maybe some of them are more simple. So we have been working with the requesters to see how we can narrow down their requests to see if there's a, a way of expediting the specific information that they're looking for so that we can provide compliance as quickly and as expeditiously as we can. So, um, that is our intent, that's what we've been doing, and we will continue to do.
And in terms of resources that are, are trying to get this done in a timely manner?
Thank you, um, yes, as you can imagine, the department already has, prior to this issue, we've, we had quite a volume of open records requests, and we have a staff that was barely able to keep up with the level of requests we had prior to the G-file becoming open. So as we've looked at the, the level of requests that have come in, we're in the process of evaluating the additional resources that would be necessary for us to be able to provide the appropriate level of staffing, so that we can also.
Put it on a website.
Provide a much more expedited review or release of that information. So, um, that may be more staffing, we may also be looking at some additional technological digitizing of some of those older archived records to be able to make them more readily available. But that's going to take some time, I just want everybody to know, that's not something that'll happen, because of the training involved, uh, it's, it's not something that will happen overnight, because the training is all on the level of.
Can I follow up? If you don't mind, I want to make sure that the record is clear, and I think, uh, Kessler Alsoffler just did some of that, and I want to, I want to put my point on a couple things. One is, because we had at least a couple of times today, a request for us to put on the record, uh, and, and of course, the way it was suggested earlier today, that the chief would say it, but the chief is responsible to the manager and, and the deputy city manager in this case, but the city of Austin is, is no longer maintaining G-files, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And when someone makes a request for information that was previously, uh, shielded by it being quote in a G-file, the city of Austin is no longer taking the position, no longer objecting to a request or seeking to shield information that's in a request based upon the fact that it may have previously been in a G-file.
That's correct.
Now, there may be some other reasons that somebody might ask for some information, and it not, and maybe it was previously in a G-file, but somebody asked for a piece of information, let's just, you know, X, a piece of information, that would have been shielded in a G-file prior, is no longer shielded because of a G-file, because it was in a G-file, but it may be otherwise, uh, something that can't be turned over. For example, um, if, if there's an ongoing current criminal investigation, that turning over the information and working with the district attorney's office, there's fear that turning over that information would jeopardize the investigation.
That's correct, and that, that does happen occasionally, and so that is a true example of the, of the time in which, um, while there's no prohibit, you know, prohibition on releasing the G-file material, remember that being a G-file, the criminal aspect of the criminal investigation component of that, to ensure, to ensure the integrity of that. to ensure, to ensure the integrity of that investigation, that needs to be withheld for that period of time. Now, when the criminal investigation is completed and is concluded, then that material will be available.
Now, and I know I've said it, but I wanna say it again, the position that the city of Austin is taking is that there is no G-file, and there will be no objection to a request for information to be turned over on the basis that it was, that was somehow shielded because it was previously in a G-file.
That's correct, Mayor, in fact, we've already provided some release of materials based on the request that we received.
Thank you.
So, one of, this may, and we will, a legal question, but it sprung the same type of conversation. There are situations where, because someone works for the city, they are compelled to make testimony, that if they were in a criminal situation, they would be in a position to, to plead fifth or not testify. For those situations where somebody was compelled to testify, if there is not an ongoing criminal investigation, my understanding is that material will be released, it still might not be admissible in court because of the circumstances under which it was provided, but that that information would be released if there is no ongoing investigation.
She's reportedly guaranteed.
I, I will let, I will let the city, is there any more you can answer that?
Yes, Councilmember, that is correct. Thank you.
I don't understand what they're saying.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
About redactions?
Other questions or discussion?
I got a question. I got a question. I got a question. Do you even know what the fuck you're talking about?
Thank you, and thank you colleagues.
Yeah, the redactions.
Through the years of setbacks and challenges, I really feel we have a real opportunity to restore stability and confidence within our police department today with a vote on this police contract. We've come a long way together, putting in a city management, qualification, and winning the U.S. league, and celebrating our largest cadet class graduation in years. This contract is the perfect homeless in peace.
Yeah, she is a Nazi. That's cool.
And it's not just another item on the agenda, it's a decisive move to solidify the benefits for our officers, and to send a clear message that we stand behind our officers. The contract has been thoroughly vetted, and I want to be clear, every transparency, accountability, and oversight measure demanded by our owners has been incorporated. Both city staff and the police association have confirmed this. This isn't just about a contract, it's about providing our officers with the support and confidence they need to do their jobs. By approving it, we establish long-term stability in the fighter framework that will allow for strategic planning.
There's a fascist right there.
It ensures that pay increases for officers align with those of other state employees, maintaining fairness across departments, and will hopefully boost morale. At its core, this contract represents our commitment to rebuilding trust and creating a more effective responsive department. It empowers our officers to engage more meaningfully, meaningfully.
Shoot and kill, shoot and kill.
That's what they do.
Solutions to some of our public safety challenges. I hope today that we are able to show our officers, our community, and ourselves, that we are serious about ensuring their long-term stability with pay and benefits. I will be supporting items forty-seven and forty-eight, and I hope that my colleagues will join me, thank you. Your support, thank you.
No, 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 we're not gonna do that.
Just did.
We're gonna maintain order. Councilmember Conry, followed by Councilmember Allison Alter.
While you're murdered, you'll maintain.
You Nazi Barbie.
Thank you, Mayor, this is my first time being here, so it's a little long this meeting, so if you can hear me.
We can.
Great, I just wanna thank all the speakers who came today, it's been a long day here in this room. It's been, obviously, a much longer day for those that are there. But, you know, during this whole process, I've talked with many constituents, stakeholders, city staff, since the details of the contract were released. And at the end of the day, I don't believe this contract reflects the values of the majority of Austinites. And agreeing to the contract, we're having a conference for all the city council members and employees. When it's four miles of office, I promise to myself and to my constituents, I will do the right thing, even if it's not a politically beneficial or easy decision. I'm disappointed tonight with the expediency of this contract, the detrimental budget impacts, and the unclear timeline for the release of previously classified G-file information. It should be transferred and acceptable to everyone. Progress does not come easily, it's often required slowly chipping away at a system that is not set up for those who are vulnerable to succeed, those that we saw as offenders staged today. Tonight, I will vote no on item forty-seven B, and that's it.
FTT!
Let's have a little debate and a discussion that we need to have, Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you, I wanna start by thanking everyone who came to speak to us today, to share your experiences and your perspectives. I know it is not easy to get up here, not easy for you to spend the whole day here, so thank you for being here and sharing, sharing your views. Like many of you, I believe we need to pay our officers well and create a culture and a system of accountability, transparency, and service. We also need to invest in the foundation, invest in the well-being of our community and enhance quality of life across Austin. As we consider this decision before us today, we must remember that the contract is just one of the tools we have to achieve those goals. Governed by state law, a meet and confer agreement by nature is an imperfect tool. And the community has rightly raised a number of questions, many of which I spoke to in my comments on Tuesday. I don't wanna repeat myself now, but I do wanna simply say that the financial trade-offs are real. As people elected to oversee the preservation of public safety throughout the community and fiscal health of this organization, though, we don't get to stop there, we also must ask whether defining this contract would be any less expensive or deliver more oversight. As we saw in February twenty twenty-three, it did not reduce the price. Today, in our deliberations, we spent a lot of time talking about finances and oversight, which are very important issues that I, like the rest of the dais, care about. As I vote today, though, at least as critical are the provisions governing promotions, leadership choices, and recruiting. We recently entrusted Lisa Davis with the important role of police chief.
That clown?
For her to succeed, she needs to be able to build her team to align with the vision and values for how officers should comport themselves.
How many murders have happened since she's been on?
Absent this contract, I believe her hands will be tied. Over the years, I'm finishing eight years now, I've seen how much our police leadership matters, both for our officers and our community.
What about our murdered community members?
Cultural change simply will not work without a chief who prioritizes it. Focused leadership is the only way that we can turn the page to create the police force that our communities ask for and where our officers thrive.
Most of the community came here and was against it.
I have weighed the choices and options before us, and it is my art and hope that our new leadership will take the tools and investment we are making and lead us to an Austin where everyone feels safe, our officers are valued, and we hold those who commit misconduct to account.
Where's, um?
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Reyes.
What's her name? There's another one, um.
Where's Allison Alter?
Today, I would be voting in favor of the proposed contract with Austin Police Association. This contract is a huge victory for police transparency and oversight in Austin. I believe strongly in police reform and have fought for the rights of accused, the incarcerated, and the marginalized for my entire life. I do not make this decision lightly. I have spoken at length with many of the advocates in this room today, and the team and I have done hours of research and analysis to make sure the contract implements all aspects of the Austin Police Oversight Act that we cannot achieve via one hit. This contract accomplishes everything.
Sold out, that's what they are.
This contract completely opens up the G-file for the entire duration of its term.
They're funding Nazi cops. It's time to shut it down. Time to shut APD down. They want reform, they won't stop killing people of color in our community. People with mental health issues. Kill, he led the carts to kill, 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 kill.
This mayor and this council joined me to block that contract.
Killer Cheeto. How many homeless people has he killed? Five hundred a year.
Even with this contract, APD funding will stay at about thirty-six percent of the general fund budget, a low level compared to years past. We are in the midst of one of the strongest economies in American history. Austin is one of the wealthiest cities in the country with a growing population and a vibrant economy. We have the resources to fund this contract and invest in social programs.
How do you like it with few homeless, and the police was stealing from him, beating him up? You couldn't hear it on that video, kid, you? That was, also he got beat up.
If we accept this narrative that you're talking about, bodies fiscal handcuffs, then we will starve.
The video stands on its own, you felt this whole thing, it won't matter.
I reject that premise.
We reject you, Cheeto, we rejected you for a long time, white boy.
Federal money during the pandemic and booming sales tax collections after the pandemic helped us delay those elections, but it is time.
The Cheeto.
Whether this contract passes or not, we will need a tax rate election to maintain our current level of city services, much less make additional investments in infrastructure and to our social safety. We will eventually, sooner than later, need a TRE, and, and I will support it when, when we get there. But I will be voting for this contract, I think it's a major step forward, and I look forward to turning the page on a, on a long.
Go to Cheeto's house, the victim, Cheeto, from Austin.
Excited, as Councilmember Alter mentioned, to give Chief Davis a plea slate.
But Kenzie said yes, Cheeto said yes, Alter said yes.
Ellis, followed by Councilmember.
Of course, he's clapping, Matt McCoviac's clapping.
When I think about this contract, and I think about it in alignment with the ordinance that we have adopted.
Just let me know.
I think it's important for me at that point to ask, you know, what, what is this what they're asking for? What is it that my constituents routinely reach out about? And one of the most major things that I hear about is response time. They think if someone needs assistance, they're gonna call nine-one-one, and an officer will be way too far away. I've also been an advocate to make sure that we don't see things like racial profiling, telling, you know, telling officers to recalibrate where they are available and how they're planning their ability to respond to the nine-one-one calls that come in. But response time is a really, really big deal in district A, and I do think that filling vacancies is a big step forward in making sure that we have that responsiveness. My constituents also care about oversight, I think there's a lot of people in town that feel like they're stuck with an either-or, and there's a lot of other people that feel like yes-and. We need to make sure that we have a department that we're all proud of, because people are working very hard in dangerous situations every day. I think this contract is improving recruitment by way of predictability.
Be proud of your local white boy, proud boy, neo-Nazi terrorist, scumbag cop.
They're younger, they're more diverse, and they're more open to issues that people are facing, like mental health issues and homelessness. And I think that is a promising, that's a promising step forward for our department. When I was growing up, people didn't talk about mental health issues, it was not something that people were very open and honest about, and that's something.
This mentally ill Karen needs to go homeless, the victor from Austin.
And serve the public, whether that is in politics, whether that is in public safety. There's a lot of people that wanna be a part of building a community that they want to see and that they.
I'm just talking to the audience.
And I know that this dais, I've been very proud of the work that we've done over the past couple of years, this dais has.
Shame.
Provided a lot of money for social services, for affordable housing, trying to make sure that our rate housing is more affordable. Raising the minimum wage, these are all issues that this dais cares very deeply about. But I do think we need predictability in the department, so that we can recruit the new, young, excited people who wanna be the next generation.
They're fleecing Austin, for the police.
We're getting it right for generations to come, so I will be supporting the contract.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember.
There's nobody watching, there's nobody watching.
Thank you, but first and foremost, I wanna thank everyone who took time out of their day-to-day to join us and to make your voices heard. We heard hours of passionate testimony from Austinites deeply invested in the safety and the future of our city.
You already know how it's gonna go.
Please know that your voices have not fallen on deaf ears. While this vote is an uneasy decision, I did not come to this vote lightly. Austinites today have sent a very loud and clear message, accountability and transparency are a must.
Vanessa Fuentes needs to go to jail.
Without a contract, our community has less oversight.
Kick her out of Austin.
And while we've heard doubts, I believe today's vote marks a critical step towards the accountability and transparency our community expects, and more importantly, deserves. It's worth emphasizing that our own legal department has certified that this contract is in full alignment with the Austin Police Oversight Act. And should a court determine otherwise, I'm fully committed to ensuring its implementation. And I also expect the Austin Police Association to return to the bargaining table in good faith to make sure this contract meets every single measure of the APOA. Today's agreement will invest in addressing APD's longstanding challenges such as recruitment and retention. But we must keep in mind that policing is just but one form of safety. We have to continue making investments beyond today's contract. In one of the wealthiest cities in the country, we have the means to support this contract while also addressing root causes of harm, the major investments in housing, housing, and living. Multiple measures. And I wanna be very clear, during the budget deliberations that this dais had just two months ago, some of us on this dais would not agree to support a modest investment in wage increases for early childhood service social workers, for homelessness services and services in prevention, for the expanded MCOAT team, which is the expanded mobile crisis outreach team, all in the name of fiscal restraint. So today, I am encouraged to see many of my colleagues willing to invest in what we agree are the needs of the city. And I look forward to continuing the conversation and to see that support for investment that, that support other community initiatives. Again, I wanna thank our advocates who have worked tirelessly on this issue. There is still much work to be done, and I look forward to our progress together.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Harbor Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. So, I've come to learn in my six years in this role, that when you vote a certain way, especially if it's the way that you want you to vote, I get your support, and I lose the support of others, and vice versa. Support is fluid.
She doesn't give a shit about the community.
As opposed to what has been implied.
Sold out.
That we all knew how we were gonna vote.
A victor, make her homeless, kick her out of Austin.
I had talking points prepared for and against, because I knew that it was gonna be a difficult day to come to a decision one way or another. I had a yes talking points, a no talking points, an abstention talking points. But, like Vicky said, more money, more problems, I've discovered more words, more worries. So I'm gonna keep it simple, I'm gonna scrap my talking points, I'm gonna say this.
I've got the money.
You have to forgive me, I'm emotional, I'm under pressure.
I sold out.
Nothing about this process or this vote has been easy. I've been transparent about my challenges with both my physical and mental wellness. This process, this job.
Cops are threatening city council.
Has taxed them on. This is not my first big challenge.
You can quit.
Not in this role, and frankly, not as a dark-skinned black woman in central Texas with lived experience that doesn't matter to some of y'all. All you see is me up here, it doesn't matter that I'm a maker.
APD kills black people more than they kill anybody.
Your literal family, that our kids go to school together, it doesn't matter. This won't be my last big challenge. I wanna thank my Uncle Roger, who might be watching right now, offering me encouragement and encouraging me not to cry.
Henry Ford.
I'd just like to thank him for his twenty-seven years of long, hard-fought law enforcement service, his consistent love and support. As I've struggled to find and maintain my footing.
He's ashamed of APD, and you.
I will be voting in support of item forty-seven and forty-eight.
Nazi, Nazi cops are cool for this black city council member.
Anybody else wishes to be heard on item number forty-seven?
You don't care about black homeless people.
That being the case, all those in favor of item forty-seven?
They're voting.
Pose, raise your hand. There being ten votes in favor, one vote.
Shame on y'all. Hey, y'all. We can squeeze money for police, but it's a break for our community. Afterthought, it's a afterthought.
Members will now vote on item number forty-eight, the chair will recognize the motion. Mayor, vote in first. Mayor, vote in votes to approve item number forty-eight. It is seconded by Councilmember Kelly, discussion on item number forty-eight.
It's still got time.
That being the case, anybody wishing to be heard on item number forty-eight? Although, Councilmember Allison Alter, you remember. Although, Councilmember Allison, I would be very nice on item forty-eight.
I just want to note that we have to do forty-eight because there was planning in the budget for the fact that we were going to have a contract in the first place.
What this does is it moves money from one part of the budget to another part. That indicates that the money was in the budget. Thank you for pointing that out.
You got money in the budget.
The motion has been made in second on item number forty-eight. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. No, Councilmember Cockburn, we're showing voting no. There being ten ayes and one nay, item number forty-eight is also adopted. Thank you to everybody that came to testify today, provided your comments. Thank you for the counsel for your work, and thank you to the manager's office and the negotiation team. And also to the APA for its coming to the table. We look forward to the APA's vote on this contract and moving things forward. That takes us to our consent agenda. Those are items one through forty-five and items eighty-three through eighty-five. Members, I indicated earlier today that item number forty-six has been pulled from the consent agenda. Primary sponsor of item number forty-six, Councilmember Kelly, has asked that that item be withdrawn from this agenda.
More millions of loans.
There's been a motion to approve item number thirty-six. Without objection.
You learned anything about democracy?
This is it right here.
There's your democracy. Doesn't matter how many people are opposed to it.
There's no democracy.
Motion on the consent agenda and a motion in the second, and then we will go to speaker. Is there a motion made?
I got all the right equipment to do it.
Approve the consent agenda. It's seconded by Councilmember Ellis. With that, I will turn to the clerk and ask the clerk, please navigate us through the speaker.
I'm here for item number two, Haibah White.
Ms. White. Ms. White. Ms. White, please go to the next side.
Item number three, Scott Whitmore and Harold Schubacher.
Developers hotels, APA.
Business people.
Business people, yeah.
That hate the homeless. I heard some of the speeches. I didn't listen to the whole, so I just wanted to edit the video.
There's a homeless person right there.
Item number five, Bill Bunch.
Mr. Bunch. If Mr. Bunch is waving his right to speak on that item.
Item number eight, Bill Bunch.
I'll pass him. That one's. Sorry, you waving that one, too? Okay.
Item number thirteen, Ferris. I'm sorry, Dennis Ferris. Doug Greco.
Item five thousand billion.
Tanya Payne. I'm sorry, there.
Go ahead, Cole. How many we have?
A few more for thirteen.
Item nine thousand. For the item nine thousand.
If your name has called, please come down to the front.
You've been here too long.
There's an open microphone. Feel free to step up, then, Mr. Greco.
After Mr. Greco, Tanya Payne, Natalie Friendsley, Lauren Ross, Lloyd Whaley, Bobby Lovinski, Zenobia Joseph.
If your name has been called and you wish to be heard, please come forth. Mr. Greco, you have the microphone.
I'm Doug Greco. I am a candidate for mayor speaking against this item.
Oh, yeah.
Two weeks ago, Mayor Watson announced
He's the mayor. He's running for mayor.
A secretly negotiated hundred and seven point six million dollar City of Austin purchase of real estate from Randy Wine Real Estate Trust. The same company that recently made a donation of ten thousand dollars to the mayor's political action committee. The PAC publicly disclosed its donors on Monday, October seventh, and on that Friday of that week, the mayor announced a deal. Whether or not we should have a combined public safety facility is an important conversation to have.
I said it to another person.
And the fact that it is over an environmentally sensitive area is a major concern. But Mayor Watson's failure to disclose this relationship has already tainted the process. It fits a pattern of behind-the-scenes unilateral decision-making and lack of concern for public trust. Our public safety departments deserve the best facilities, but our city deserves a mayor who feels accountable to taxpayers and avoids even the appearance of him proprietary. Or a pay-for-play deal. The council should not approve this rushed deal today, item thirteen. A candidate may know who has donated to their PACs once it is publicly disclosed and is required by law. A mayor should be aware and disclose any perceived conflicts of interest. And taxpayers should know who may be trying to influence and bind influence at City Hall. The Austin Leadership PAC, which is supporting the mayor's candidacy, has raised about four million dollars primarily from developers, private equity, oil and gas. These donors include Randy Wine Realty, ten thousand dollars. Kilroy Realty, an L.A.-based developer, a hundred thousand dollars. HPI Realty, two downtown offices, twenty-five thousand dollars. Ariel Capital Hitchman, twenty-five thousand dollars. Profit Capital Mortgage Act Securities, five thousand dollars. And Brad Sheffield, oil and gas billionaire, Trump ad supporter, donated seventy-five thousand two years ago to the mayor's PAC. Maxed out his campaign and has again donated forty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars, interesting amount. And I ask, you know, if you have been subject to exposing this year, let's close.
Cut down, cut down. What happened? What happened?
Sixty crash estimations, over six thousand dollars.
The water's right there.
Some donations from outside the city is forty-seven thousand dollars. And I want to discuss the characters all at the public trough. And in shape.
Moving on to item number fourteen.
Hang on. There's one basically signed on our name.
This, this is the sign up?
Voting wise? Police officer, who's in it? I think you recognize it.
Yeah, Barry. Twitchy. It's Twitchy Barry. You all right there? Bad cop. Bad cop right there. Likes to beat people up from behind with his baton while they're being dogflogged for filming police. Bad, bad, bad cop right there. Very violent. Very, very large. Bad capo. Bad capo. He says if I film him stalking, if I film him at work, it's stalking, except for the law says we're supposed to film the police. Walk away. Nonwiler looking. Nonwiler dumbass. There they go. Think they're going on one of the freakouts? Where are they going? Going off to hang out with P Diddy? Bunch of morons. Bunch of morons. Nonewiler, the bad cop that just played out on video. Abusing the public, cussing at the public. He's got a lot of medals. He's a, he's a well-respected, um, spokesman for the APA slash AOPA, bunch of Nazi clowns. He's one of their skinhead cops. He's a gay skinhead cop. Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them. A whole bunch of them bootlickers out here that unconstitutional oath-breaking bootlickers that target. Look at all these white people, targeting people of color. Look at all these white cops. All these white. All these white mobsters working for the police. Doing Rico violations, racketeering. USC nineteen eighty-five conspiracy of parties. There's, uh, there's their APA president, young Michael Bullock, whatever his name, Bullfrog, whatever. There goes alien-headed nonwiler. See you later. So they're all going back together. Hopefully, it's not a deep blow. But, you know, what we've been finding out about our, our, our wealthy and our elites, wouldn't be surprising if the government employees that are getting paid sixteen million extra dollars, two hundred and sixteen million dollars, whatever, if they're involved in drug parties or sex parties. Duster Harf certainly was, and he was an assistant chief at APD. Certainly was involved in producing cocaine at the Yellow Rose. Choking women, strangling them while he's having sex with them on video, using the police phone. And he was never, never charged with any crimes. The cameras like kryptonite to bad cops. If you've got too many cockroaches, you can use a spray. You can use some sage. You can use peppermint oil. Uh, if you've got too many bad cops, just pull your camera out and stand around. Stand around. Is she still talking about this stuff? What are they talking about now? You think they have Nazi tattoos? You think these two cops have Nazi tattoos or not? You think they do? I mean, I wish we could just ask them to give us a itemized list of their tattoos. Because, as you can see on the video today that I played at city council, they have, uh, they have white nationalists, neo-Nazi tattoos, Nazi tattoos related to the SS. Don't ask me what SS stands for. Is that Zenobia? I can't see. She's speaking well. Oh, Taylor. Taylor's the one that attacked me and my dog. Oh, there's my friend. You want to buy a flashlight? I got one here for five bucks. I got a counter. I got a pair of cards here. Whatever you need. Made it. I got here late, but I, I got to play my video. It's hard for. Yeah. Still trying to get ahold of Phil Bar. He's busy in there. What are you doing? Contact me? Bill Bunch, Phil Bar, the lawyer for S.O.S. Inside? Yeah, I know he's in there. Too busy. Thank you for sharing. I like Zenobia. All right, it's good seeing you, Brad.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah, yeah, check out my video. I'm good. I'm good. Have a nice one. I like your hair.
Austin Alliance, they're, they're here in favor of the police.
Like that yellow hair. It's like, is it gold? Maybe it's gold. It's less yellow than this yellow bell here. And these yellow bells, these are pretty yellow. I'd say that's gold, but I don't know. Looks gold on my screen here.
Okay, bro. The item forty-seven. All opposed. Please, you're up.
Here comes all the cops. Look, here comes all the cops. You think they want to talk? Would you like the interview about the neo-Nazi tattoo on that officer, on that officer's arm, or the arrest of the press? You don't have to talk to the press, right? You're above us. You don't feel obliged to speak to the press? All right. Well, you should probably leave Austin because we're not going to leave you alone. Enjoy your money. Rotten hell with the money.
Y'all are disgraced.
You've disgraced yourselves with all that video that I showed. You're a disgrace.
Michael Bullock, you're a disgrace, Michael Bullock.
Your professional, your professional integrity is at risk because you've turned a blind eye to white supremacy. Don't hail Hitler me. I'm not interested, Michael Bullock. Thank you very much. Your moms failed you when they raised punks that are destroying Austin with white supremacy. Every one of you white people doesn't fucking get it, and you can leave. You're standing on foreign land. Stolen land. Heil Himmler is proud of you. Punk-ass Nazi cops. All right, that's all I have to say. Outside, they can't keep you from talking. Outside, they certainly can't keep you from talking.
Yeah, they, outside, they can't.
And they don't want to talk. The cats got their tongue. They know I'm right. They're embarrassed with that video today showing Nazi swat, Nazi, uh, SS, uh. Oh, they're going to Three Forks. We know that there's a lot of cocaine at that club. We were camped out here at City Hall. People came out of there saying there, there's a bunch of cocaine in that club. They're going to Three Forks across the street to party, have drinks, do whatever. Hey, man, y'all are good. Thanks for sharing. Thanks for being here. Uh, I don't see anybody viewing, so I think I'm shadow banned. Censored. All right, see y'all later. Be safe.